All right. Good evening, East Hampton Town Board. We are live on Channel 22. We're streaming to YouTube. You are being recorded during this meeting and the phone lines are open and you may begin.
Thank you, LTV. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the East Hampton Town Board Meeting of Thursday, August 7, 2025. Carol, if you could please read the roll call.
President.
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 Present. Now, if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So tonight's town board meeting is going to start with a comments from our town historian Hugh King. And then we have special guests in the house, the new District 36 Champions. We're going to be giving certificates to all of you players and we're so grateful that you could come here tonight. And then that is going to be followed by three public hearings, public portion, and then we will do the resolutions. So first, we invite up our town historian Hugh King. We did it.
Okay, in our continuing saga of police chiefs, we're going to talk about another police chief tonight. Todd Saris. Todd Saris spent four years with the East Hampton Village Department. And then he moved to the town where he's appointed chief in 2001. In May of 1971, he joined his brother's department, his brother was Randy Saris, as a traffic and fall control officer before enrolling in Suffolk County Community College. It wasn't long before that, he was offered a job as a patrolman and he eventually left school. Only a week from his graduating from the Suffolk County Police Academy, he was laid off. The Police Benevolate Association was in the midst of a heated contract negotiations with the village board and they threatened Mr. Saris that they were going to lay him off. Well, the chief dawdlerman said, go ahead and do it. We're not going to give in. He patrolled mainly at Montauk for about five years until become a detective in 1980. Three years later, he made a, he was made a sergeant. Two years after that, he was a detective sergeant and by 1987, he was a detective lieutenant. In 1991, he became captain and then executive officer and then he became the police chief. And he was the police chief at the same time as his brother Randy was the village police chief, okay? Now, I have two other things to say. The supervisor sent me an email about a essay that we're supposed to write for the 250th anniversary of the Declaration of Independence, telling about the contributions that East Hampton has made. Well, 750 words is not even close to what this town has done. And that's a testament to past town boards and past historical societies and past historians. And you were at Mrs. Tulps, the supervisor gave Mrs. Tulpe a proclamation. I just want you to know there's a rumor starting that she's going to be appointing me deputy mayor of Amagansett. And one final thing, kids, I was on the 1954 Amagansett Little League team. We won the district championship.
Need more time? Okay, so what we're going to do now, we're still waiting for everyone to show up. We're going to start with the first public hearing. Carol, if you could please read the meeting notice. The public hearings will be held live and in person by the town board and will be available electronically by video and teleconferencing and will be televised on local TV, Channel 22, and available for live stream on the LTV website. The public shall be permitted to appear in person but may also provide comments on the matter being heard by calling 351-888-6331. Any person or party wishing to be heard with respect to the foregoing may do so in person, by agent, by attorney, or by call into the live stream or by written comment addressed to the East Hampton Town Clerk, 159 Panago Road, East Hampton. Comments may also be submitted to the town clerk by email to cbrannan@ehamptonny.gov. All comments must be received by the town clerk by the date and time of the public hearing. Please check the meeting agenda posted on the town's website for any changes and for updated information. Please take notice that pursuant to Section 247 of the General Municipal Law of the State of New York and provisions of the East Hampton Town Code, the town board of the town of East Hampton will hold a public hearing in the Town Hall Meeting Room, 159 Panago Road, East Hampton, on August 7 at 6:00 PM or soon thereafter as this matter may be heard concerning the filing grant of a deed of dedication of a reserved area to the town of East Hampton. The grantor is GV at Mulford Avenue LLC. It's a deed of dedication of a reserved area dated July 2 and the location is 87 Old Northwest Road in East Hampton. Suffolk County Tax Map 300, 136, 130.2 subdivision map of Glen Valley Associates, LTV. And the reviewing agency is the planning board. Carol, there's no one signed up, right, for this public hearing? No, there isn't that. Would anyone like to address the board on this public hearing? Matthew, is there anyone on the line?
We have no callers on the line.
Second. All in favor? Ready? Okay, so as I said earlier, tonight's a big night. We have the district champs in the house. So, we step down here. So I want to welcome everyone again. And boys, I want to speak to you. Your team gave us something really special to cheer for this summer and we're so excited to have you here. Your hard work, your heart, and the way you supported each other on and off the field brought so much pride to East Hampton. And now, you're the District 36 Champions. Congratulations on an unforgettable season and thank you for representing your community so well. So what I'd like to do is, we're going to bring up the players. I'm going to call you one at a time and you're going to come up and we're going to line up here, okay? So first is Caden Kitty.
Caden is the only player that we're missing. And the head coach, Sean Kitty.
Okay. Colin Caulfield. Courtly Marchesi. Evan Sullivan. Lucas Sarita. Luke Sennelli. Mathias Duran. I'll slide down a little bit. Ryder Abrams. So you guys faced really tough competition and we're really excited and so proud of you. We're going to leave Sean's here. We also want to celebrate your coaches and your assistant coaches. Aaron Marchesi. And Joe Sullivan. All right, so you guys, you want to, the board want to come down and stand behind the boys? Everybody's in the picture? All right, now, boys, who wants to speak? You go up to the, to the, anybody want to talk to the team and talk about what the experience has been like? Awesome. All right, and you, why don't you tell us about the experience?
Okay. Testing? Is it working? Hello? Hi. It was pretty fun. Just like playing baseball with your friends and like making new friends that you didn't know. And like, just like winning all those games felt pretty good. And like, a lot of close ones. Yeah, felt nice.
Anyone else want to go up?
So I heard you guys were, uh...
I think it was tough through all the games, but I think the best game was when we came back from an 11 to 2 and like, um, the tough game. It was versus North Shores, the semifinals. And winning the championship was the best feeling I've ever had.
Would anyone else like to go up there?
It was, um, fun and my favorite was when we were down 11 to 2 and we came back in three innings and Luke won us a game on a walk-off hit.
All right, anyone else?
Just wanted to say how much fun it was to coach you boys. You know, right, right from the first day of practice, we could tell that you guys had a, had a special team. And throughout all the games, you guys, you know, showed true grit. You know, really, really buckled down, bared down and played hard when you needed to. And our, our team motto, you know, when, when we're, when we're giving a cheer before every game was always hustle. And you guys certainly hustled, hustled out there, played your hearts out. And it was a privilege being your coach and thank you for taking us as far as you guys did. Can't wait to do it again in a couple of years with this squad. They, you guys truly have something special going together and let's keep up the good work. Keep playing and keep, keep enjoying yourselves.
You guys really made Bonne proud. Thank you. And we look forward to seeing you play in the future.
Thank you.
Matthew, we're just going to take a minute.
Okay, no problem.
Amazing. Amazing, amazing.
I'll, I'll meet you at Newtown Lane in Main Street anytime this happens.
Thank you. Sure. So deserved. Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, we're going to go back to the public hearings. Carol, if you could read the second, second meeting notice, please. Notice hereby given, the town board of the town of East Hampton will hold a public hearing at Town Hall, 159 Panago Road, East Hampton on Thursday, August 7 at 6:00 PM or soon thereafter as this matter may be heard to consider comments of all people with regard to the Amendment of Town Code, Chapter 185-4, exemptions to noise standards as follows. A new paragraph R to read as follows. Noise from emergency generators during a power outage at which time the standards of Section 185-3A, 1A and B shall be applied from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. Okay, thank you, Carol. Is anyone signed up? Is anyone here that would like to address the board on this public hearing? Matthew, is there anyone on the line?
We have no callers on the line.
Motion to close?
Second. All in favor? Carol, if you could please read the third meeting notice. Please take notice that the town board hereby directs that a public hearing shall be held on August 7 at 6:00 PM or as soon thereafter as this matter may be heard at East Hampton Town Hall, 159 Panago Road, East Hampton to hear any and all persons either for or against a proposed contract with the village of Sag Harbor for fire protection and emergency ambulance service to be furnished by the village on behalf of the Fire Protection District known as the East Hampton Fire Protection District for the calendar year 2025 upon the following general terms. The fire department shall answer and attend all calls in said fire district and shall furnish firefighting vehicles and equipment and firefighting personnel. The fire department shall furnish emergency ambulance service, including vehicles and equipment and ambulance personnel to the district. For the fire protection services during the 12-month period of 2025, Sag Harbor Village shall be paid a total sum of $41,363.22. And for ambulance protection services during the 12-month period of 2025, the Sag Harbor Village shall be paid the sum of $26,447.77. And from such funds, the fire department shall be paid directly the sum of $7,658.77. And the ambulance court shall be paid directly the sum of $3,071.47. The town's total cost for fire protection and ambulance services under the contract are $67,811.8. Thank you, Carol. Is there anyone, anyone here that would like to address the board on this public hearing? Matthew, is there anyone on the line?
We have no callers on the line.
Motion to close?
Second. All in favor? Okay, so now we'll go over to public portion and I believe Jerry Turza, you had signed up. Welcome, Jerry.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. For the record, my name is Gerard Turza Jr. I am the Fire and EMS Administrator for the village of East Hampton. We provide fire and EMS service. Fire Department's been providing it for over 125 years. Before the board tonight is the resolution to adopt the, what we refer to as the Northwestern Protection District contracts for East Hampton between East Hampton Town and East Hampton Village for those services. I understand there was a question from the public last month regarding such contracts and I just kind of wanted to go on the record. Been in the business about 33 years, all locally. I'm also the chairman of the County FRES Commission, so I see this on a daily basis and I work with it. Public safety is government's primary obligation, right? If we can't keep our, our public safe, if we can't keep the citizenry secure, we failed in our most basic obligation. This is a very costly business, just so the public's aware of it. It's more than just fire trucks going down the road, throwing people in an ambulance, taking them over to an ER, which the new ER is an amazing asset to the community. There's a lot that goes into this. And just to kind of give, throw some, some broad general numbers out there, because it doesn't have to necessarily be East Hampton, it could be any fire department, any EMS agency out there. To outfit a firefighter, you're probably looking somewhere in the neighborhood of about anywhere from a minimum of $7,500 to roughly about $9,000 to $10,000 per firefighter. That's the turnout gear, right, the traditional ensemble that we wear. To put some things in relative terms and we're going to, we're going to shoot back towards COVID. During COVID, pre-COVID, it would cost for the coat and pant ensemble, just a coat and pants, $2,500. $5,000 today, just a few years. September 1, the state contract gets renewed, a 7% increase across the board. Our, all of our vendors, all of our suppliers, whether it's the narcotics that we're carrying on, the ambulances, vehicles, equipment, we're seeing increases from 5% to 25%. Now, we're sprinkling in some tariffs. And for those that think that the tariffs really don't affect us, they're affecting us. I just bought some, some specialized helmets for our brush truck and they were coming from London. And guess what? It's an American-made company. They're outsourced overseas. Tariffs were put on there. So there's an ever-increasing burden with that. But now, what does the taxpayer get? They don't only get qualified and equipped personnel, they're also getting services. So currently, East Hampton, we are engaged with the ISO, Insurance Service Organization, because I, part of my job is I deal with our homeowners on a daily basis. Because regionally, we're having a hard time keeping our residents insured. That's a major expense for them. They look at the efficiency of a fire department. There are certain things industry-wide, whether it's here in New York or it's in California or Idaho, wherever it is in the US, the Insurance Service Organization, ISO, rates the efficiency. We had a longstanding working partnership with the, with the town. We were able to get our Northwest substation opened up. The day that opened up, residents in the Northwest Protection District saw a dramatic decrease in their homeowners' insurance. Tens of thousands of dollars. We've been working with the Suffolk County Water Authority, as the board knows, on different projects to bring more public water in. Public water increases the home value. It increases quality of life. It's a statistical planning fact. We're also currently engaged, our rating dropped, we went from a 9.10, which is, you know, no reflection on the fire department's geographic. You have to live within five miles of a firehouse or 1,000 feet of public water. So residents in Northwest, before we opened that substation up, they didn't meet those criteria. So we were able to help bridge that gap, get them a reduction. We went from a 9.10X to a 3.3X, which is a very admirable jump. It's, it's, there's not very many departments in the state of New York that have it. We're engaged in our current review and we're very confident we're going to be able to do better. We have to do better. We're taxpayers as well. I'm also a resident in Northwest. So I, I rest easy at night knowing that our money is being spent well, whether it's in the Northwest Protection District, whether it's in Montauk, whether it's Amagansett Springs, wherever it is, the costs are, are a cost of doing business. As you, you've got another resolution for the upgrade of your dispatch center. It's an expensive business that we're in. So I just wanted to kind of put that on public record for the public that they know that there's, there's costs that you don't see when the trucks are going down the road. You know, they don't see what goes on to put a police officer on the streets, things like that. The public really needs to just kind of be aware of it and at any time that they feel that they want to come talk to us, especially if you're living in East Hampton Fire District or any of the protection districts that we have in East Hampton, they can feel free to contact me and we'll sit down with them. So we do.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Jer, can I say one thing also? I also want to thank you for your advocacy at the, at the county level and specifically most recently for the affordable housing for first responders. I know you spoke many a times at that and that was very successful and something I know that the board is interested in then too. Their voice like yours there went far. I was at one of those public hearings then too.
Thank you.
I would also add, I mean, I've been an employee of that organization and I've seen firsthand how well it is run. Look, public safety out here is a partnership between all our municipal agencies and I appreciate whatever in that firehouse does and thank you.
Like I, like I say, the mission is always the people. And that's, it's simple, but it's very profound stuff. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board? David? Welcome, David.
Good evening. Before I start.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I too would like to speak. My name, David Buddha, from the Springs. I too would like to speak concerning tonight's resolution 2025-1089, which is the post-hearing proposed adoption of the contract with the village to provide fire and ambulance services to two of the town's five water protection districts. First, let me tell you what I've given you. I've given you two pieces of paper. The first one is a copy of that resolution, just so you have it in front of you. And also, I've put a couple of markups. Some of it is just what we call spading, just minor corrections. But there is an omission in the first where, in the whereas clause that forgets to mention, just as the previous speaker forgot to mention the fact that this is a contract for two separate and distinct fire protection districts. It's not just for Northwest Fire Protection District, but it's also for the recently renamed East Hampton Water Supply and Fire Protection District. The resolution, first of all, when we had the hearing back on July, I was confused because this was a change in your pattern. You had always done separate agreements, separate contracts for each of the two separate fire protection districts. You combine them into one contract and it was a little confusing because it was a change of pace. Also, this resolution does not make it amply clear, abundantly clear that you're dealing with contract, a contract, one contract for two different districts. So I suggest that there's a little bit of minor housekeeping that needs to be done before this resolution is adopted. The second page that I've given you is a summary of the cost of your contracts over the past 10 years for providing fire and ambulance services for the Northwest Fire Protection District. On the one hand, the East Hampton Water Supply District, now known as the East Hampton Water Supply and Fire Protection District, and for the next two years, combining the two, because that's what you're proposing to do. So let me start. This evening, I'd like to take a moment of your time, actually three minutes, to discuss the proposed resolution 1089, which is the post-hearing resolution to adopt the 26, 2026 and 2027 contract with the village of East Hampton to provide fire and ambulance services for two of the town's five, five fire protection districts. Every two years, the town and the village negotiate the cost of the renewal of the essential contracts for providing fire and ambulance services for these two town fire protection districts, which are areas of the town that are not within independent... which are areas of the town that are not within independent and self-governing fire districts, and that are outside of the villages. The public hearing that was held on July 1st was somewhat bewildering to me, because this year, unlike prior years, the town and the village decided to negotiate one combined contract to cover the services to be provided to these two separate and distinct fire protection districts. The East Hampton Water Supply and Water Protection District encompasses the area of the town that is immediately north and east of the East Hampton Village, whereas the Northwest Fire Protection District encompasses areas of the town that are relatively much further from the Village Emergency Services Building in Northwest Woods and also Northern Wayne Scott. After the July 3 public hearing, I communicated with the town board, town attorney, and the town tax receiver to inquire whether it was feasible to have one village contract to provide services to two separate and distinct tax districts. Historically, these two fire protection districts have had different tax rates for the cost of their ambulance services and fire services, perhaps recognizing the difference in proximity to the Village Emergency Services Building. By ratifying and adopting a single combined contract with the village, it may be difficult, if not impossible, to fairly allocate and apportion the cost of the contract between residents of these two separate taxing districts. In response to my July 14 email communication, I received absolutely no response from any town official. You all are seemingly content to respond to public comment at public meetings with silence, which is quite frustrating. Often, you invite the Speaker to contact you offline to get a response. However, even when I did so, all I received was the silent treatment. The spreadsheet that I've provided to you tonight shows the history of the cost of fire and ambulance services in these two subject fire protection districts. You will note that from 2016 through 2022, there were six years of fairly small increases, ranging from 2% to 5% increases spread over each of two-year periods. Then, for 2023, there was an enormous increase in the tax rates of about 1/3 for both fire districts. I believe this outsized increase was primarily the result of the decision that was made to request that the village build and equip a new fire substation at the old Northwest Brush Dump, so that some residents of Northwest Woods and Northern Wayne Scott would, at least on paper, no longer be residing more than five miles from a fire station and therefore be subject to significantly higher homeowners' insurance rates. When this plan was hatched, Becky Hanson, then the village administrator, was quoted in a newspaper article stating, "The new substation building would not have any permanent staff, will not be open to the public, would not host public events, but will just be used to house equipment and emergency vehicles." Now that the building and the equipping of what some see as being a Potemkin Village Fire Station has long been completed, I have to wonder why there has not been any moderation or reduction in the tax rates for these two fire protection districts. Also, I have to wonder if it is entirely fair to lump the residents of the two separate fire protection districts together to the extent that the principal driver for the substantial tax rate increase appears to have been a very deliberate plan to provide a financial benefit primarily, if not exclusively, for the residents of only the Northwest Fire Protection District. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Is there anyone else here that would like to address the Board? Matthew, is there anyone on the line?
We have no callers on the line.
Okay, so now we're ready to go to resolutions. Tom?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. I will start with Resolution 2025-10055. This is for approval of warrant claims in the amount of $6,106,112.26 and $86,370.22 on utility warrant number 8A.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
2025-1056 is a budget modification for sanitation department to move $6,000 from household hazard device program to light and power.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
1057 is a notice to bidders, EH25033. This is for sanitation and drainage improvements. Bid is available August 7, 2025, due back August 18, 2025. For more information, you can contact the purchasing department at purchasing@ehamptonny.gov between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
1058 is also a notice to bidders, bid number EH25034. This is sanitation garage mold remediation. Bid is available August 7, 2025. Bid is due August 28, 2025. Again, you can contact the purchasing department for more information.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
1059 is a notice to bidders for a grinder for sanitation department. This is bid number EH25040. Bid is available August 14, 2025, and due back September 2024, 2025. Again, for more information, contact the purchasing department, purchasing@ehamptonny.gov.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
It's my pleasure, I'll offer Resolution 2025-1060. This is authorized emergency road repair at the request of the Project Highway Inspector on Ocean Boulevard.
Second, all in favor.
Aye.
1061 is the budget modification for recreation department, where we're bringing $1,800 from part-time salaries to the same amount for administrative costs for credit card fees.
Second, all in favor.
Aye.
1062 is a budget modification for the recreation department, where we're bringing $8,000 from part-time salaries and the same amount increasing the line for motor vehicles repairs and supply.
Second, all in favor.
Aye.
1063 is a budget modification for the highway department, where we're bringing interest on investments from $29,115,000, sorry, $29,115,000. We're increasing outside professional in the same amount.
Second, all in favor.
Aye.
1064 is a budget modification for the highway department.
Second.
No.
No.
Same. No, it's not.
Oh, I see that. It's the same numbers.
Can we, I'm going to make a motion to table 2025-1064.
Table or withdraw?
No, the budget line is different than the expenditure line.
And it's for, and it's for different purpose.
But eerily in the same amount.
Yeah. Yeah, look at, compare 1063 and 1064. It's for the same dollar amount, same department, but for a different purpose. One is for outside professional and one is for subcontractor costs. It's just odd that it's both $29,115.
No, you know what? I'm so sorry. My apologies. Subcontractor costs, this is for the outside mowing that we're doing. We just discussed this actually in budget. So I believe that's where this is coming from. This is for mowing of the right-of-ways that we've been doing then, too. We decided to take that and do that as a subcontractor cost.
And that it was subcontract, and not outside professional.
That's correct.
So you want to withdraw 1063?
No, not necessarily. I'd rather actually table and make sure it's correct then, too. We can bring it back on Tuesday. Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to the table. Make a motion to table 1064.
Second, all in favor.
Aye.
1065 is a budget modification for the highway department for the roof replacement, where we're bringing $15,000 from interest on investments and then $15,000 from inter-fund transfer and increasing the expenditure lines for the transfer to other funds in the amount of $15,000, and also for town-wide roof replacement for $15,000.
Second, all in favor.
Aye.
1066 is a set bid, EH number 1025-032. This is for IA system installation at 20 Dorset Road. This is to Kent Rousseau Incorporated. The amount is for $66,780.
Second, all in favor.
Aye.
1067 is a set bid, EH25-022. This is for the Peach Farmhouse renovation. This goes to Lowduka Associates. And the total cost is not to exceed $1,170,444.
Second, all in favor.
Aye.
1068 is a set bid, EH25-010. This is the town of East Hampton Highway Department Roof to Demi Construction Systems. And let's see here. Resolve the demi systems for the total cost of $315,126, taken from the funds below.
Second, all in favor.
Aye.
1069 is approved change order number one for the old stone culvert replacement and invasive species removal. This is for additional frag muds removal in the amount of $8,058.
Second, all in favor.
Aye.
1070 is retain L.K. McLean Associates for professional services for the Peach Farmhouse and permitting and construction support services. And let's see here. Permitting assistance for $9,500 construction admin for $34,000. Construction inspection for $102,000. Our total cost not to exceed $145,500.
Second, all in favor.
Aye.
I have Resolution 1071, which is to promote and provisionally appoint Chris Stoker to Planner 2. Resolve that Christopher Stoker is hereby promoted and provisionally appointed to the full-time position of Planner 2 in the Planning Department at the hourly rate of $35.13, grade 26, step 4, which is $73,064.58 annually for a 40-hour work week effective retroactive to July 25, 2025.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 1072 is for the Justice Department, and it's for a JCAP grant and for unused funds. Whereas the town board adopted Resolution 25483 to establish a budget for this grant in the amount of $5,750.78, whereas the Unified Court System advanced via ACH Credit to the town, that same amount was received in April 2025. Resolve that the town board directs the Finance Office to make the following budget modifications as an adjustment to unused funds. And further resolve that upon submission of a proper voucher, a check shall be issued to the Commissioner of Taxation and Finance in the amount of $957.14.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 1073 is to accept security and undertaking for construction of road and drainage. And this is resolved that the undertaking, together with the following security, are accepted by the town. The applicant is Mark and Marlene Daniels. The parcel is at 61 Gardner's Lane, East Hampton. And the security is in the amount of $22,500.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 1074 is to release security in Urban Renewal Parcel 203 in SP-1-2. And this is where a request is made to the town board to return security posted for said roadwork. The town's consulting engineer approved the roadwork. Resolve that the security held by the town board is released. The applicant is 26 Walton Avenue, EH Invesco LLC, care of John J. Quinn. The location is 26 Walton Avenue, East Hampton, and it is in the amount of $20,000.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 1075 is to adopt local law, amending Chapter 255, 1-43E.1 for personal wireless facilities for Tier 1. Whereas the town board held a public hearing on July 3 to consider a local law entitled above. Whereas after considering the proposed local law and comments received at the time of the hearing, the town board believes that the adoption of the proposed local law is in the best interest of the town. Whereas this is a Type 2 action pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR, and the Chapter 128 of the Environmental Quality Review of the Town Code, resolve that the proposed local law is hereby adopted to read as follows. All of the changes are listed in the resolution.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye. Resolution 1076 is a provisional appointment to Director of Housing for Mark Morgan Perez in the amount of $135,000 per year, effective September 8, 2025.
Second.
Discussion? I'd just like to say, I'd like to welcome Mark to the team. And I'd like, we're very excited to have him. And I'd like to extend a real thank you during our search to the whole Housing Department team, Joanne, Linda, Ann, Danielle, and Jenny. Did a wonderful job, and we're looking forward to Mark joining the team.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye. Resolution 1078, this is to refund various permits. Sorry, 1077. This is to authorize McKissok appraisal continuing education online, totaling 14 hours for Jill Massa in the amount of $283.10.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye. Resolution 1078, this is to refund various permits for Laura Weidman Powers in the amount of $175 for a duplicate family beach permit.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 2025-1079 is to accept the resignation of Secretary to the Town Supervisor, Joanne Ulrich, effective August 8, 2025. Second, all in favor.
Aye.
1080 is to appoint Secretary to the Town Supervisor, Aileen Hare, at an annual salary of $78,000 for a 40-hour work week, effective August 11, 2025. Second, all in favor.
Aye.
1081 is a request to reduce the speed limit on a portion of Long Lane, County Road 59, from 45 miles per hour to 30 miles per hour. We discussed this at Tuesday's town board work session. Second, all in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 1082 is to amend the town of East Hampton's 401A Special Pay Plan to include CSEA employees. Second, all in favor.
Aye.
1083 is a notice to bidders, EH25035, car carrier for the town of East Hampton. Bid is available August 7 and due back August 21. Second, all in favor.
Aye.
1084 is a notice to bidders, EH25036. This is for the East Hampton Town Police Department Dispatch Room renovations. The bid is available August 14 and due back September 10. A pre-bid meeting will be held on Wednesday, August 27, at 11:00 a.m. Second, all in favor.
Aye.
1085 is to accept a donation and a 2025 budget modification for the Police Department in the amount of $50,000. So we're going to increase the revenue budget line for gifts and donations to $50,000 and increase the expenditure line for other equipment for $40,000 and uniforms for $10,000. Second, all in favor.
Move for discussion? Do we have any insight as to what the other equipment is here? Is assumed as a gift of some kind, or?
No, it's to, the gift is the $50,000, and it's an unrestricted gift, so the chief could use it for whatever the needs are. So he is asked to put the $40,000 in other equipment and 10 in uniforms.
Thank you.
All in favor.
Aye.
Sorry, the page is sticking together. Resolution 1086 is a budget modification for the airport for costs related to, for a repair at the fuel farm. So we're decreasing aviation fuel in the amount of $20,000 and increasing subcontractor costs in the same amount. Second, all in favor.
Aye.
1087 is a budget modification for the Finance Department, and this is for the annual debt service issuing costs. We're increasing the revenue budget line for interest on investments in the amount of $66,222. And we're increasing the expenditure budget line for outside professional in the same amount. Second, all in favor.
Aye.
1088 is a designation of depositories for the town funds for 2025. We're amending it to add Metropolitan Commercial Bank to the list of depositories for town funds in 2025. Second, all in favor.
Aye.
1089 is a resolution to prove the agreement with the Village of East Hampton for the Northwest Fire Protection District and the East Hampton Water Supply and Fire Protection District for Callendoo's years 26 and 27. Second.
Move for discussion?
Yeah, that's what I was going to do. So it's been pointed out that there are a number of, I want to say typos, in the resolution. So we can either amend those resolutions now or we can bring this back on Tuesday.
Let's amend them now.
Okay. All right, so let me just say, the amendments, Carol, in the headline, it should be, I don't know what AH is. Yeah, we could strike that. Northwest Fire Protection District
Northwest Fire Protection District and Town of East Hampton Water Supply and Fire Protection District.
I'd rather not strike it.
Okay.
When you go looking for a place, you cannot see H, A, H, how you know what resolution you're looking at.
Okay.
If you want to spell out after hearing, I don't have the issue with that.
Okay. Yeah, if we could spell out after hearing. Okay, and then in the body, in the first whereas clause, third line down, it should state East Hampton Fire Department. Fourth line down, Fire Protection Districts with an S, plural. Fifth line down, and the East Hampton Water Supply and Fire Protection District. And then in one, Fire District should be plural, and in two, Fire District should And lastly, in the resolved, it should say Northwest Fire Protection District and East Hampton Water Supply and Fire Protection Districts, right town of. Jake, in the actual agreement, we break it out by the two districts what the fees are, what the agreement is, or could you?
I'll double-check it right now, but that's in the...
Right, but I'm just saying, we could get that information from Mr. Buddha. Yeah.
Yeah, that was, just to address some Mr. Buddha's points for discussion. Mr. Buddha, I'd say firstly, thank you for bringing to our attention the separation of districts, it's something we'll keep an eye on, and as we do this resolution moving forward, we'll have that pertinent knowledge. On your comments that you didn't receive any feedback, I apologize for that on behalf of the town going forward. If you'd like to CC me, or one of the board members, I'm sure we can address that. On your last point, though, with regards to the facility in the Northwest Woods area, one thing I do want to kind of challenge you on that a little bit, is just to say that the equipment that is stored in there is of massive value for the entire East Hampton town. Brushfire trucks as a brushfire communication center vehicle there, so the benefit is not solely to Northwest Woods, that is to the entire town.
Thank you, Tom.
Second is amended.
All in favor.
Resolution 1090, this is a budget modification for housing and community development to decrease full-time salaries in the amount of $12,222, and increase budget line for computer software in the amount of $12,222. Second.
All in favor.
Resolution 1091, this is a first-time homebuyer down payment assistant program for Kiran in the amount of $30,000. Second.
All in favor.
Okay, so that's all the business we have today. Do I have a motion to go into exec session? Yes, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for personnel, public safety, litigation, and contracts.
Second.
All in favor.
Thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight, and thank you at LTV. Have a good night, Matthew.